All right, let's call to order the regular council meeting here on Tuesday, September 20th. We are at the WC O'Neill Arena Complex in the council chambers. And as well, we are being able to be viewed through Zoom and through Facebook. So at this particular time, we will get into the agenda. And the first thing is the recording of attendance. I note that all members of council are here with exception of Counselor Blanchard. Is not online, correct? So we'll make that note. And if he joins later, I'm not sure, then we'll add him in at the appropriate time. And before we get into the approval of the agenda, I wanted to recognize that we are on the unceded traditional territory of the Besko Toma Gotti people. If we get into the approval of the agenda, I'll be looking for a mover to actually amend it. And the reason being is that we had an email from staff in regards to adding under new business, something under Recreation Community Services, which would be the appointment of manager of recreation for the town of St. Andrews. So could I have a mover to amend the agenda? I've got Counselor Heenan and a second there, please. I've got Deputy Mayor Akeji. I'm not favoring the left. It was two hands on the left this time. So all in favor of this amendment, please signify by saying aye. That's been amended. So let's approve the agenda now. Mover, please. Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Goumaschel. Any more discussions on the agenda? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody. The agenda has been approved. We're going to get into the disclosure of conflict of interest. I'll start off. I do have one under Business Tourism Heritage and Culture. I'll be calling a conflict of interest on BTHC 220902. Is there any other conflict of interest at this particular time? Seeing none, checking online to make sure Counselor Hurdle. Nope, we're good there. All right, at this time, we're going to move right into the presentations. And I see we have two presenters joining us this evening through Zoom. So we will kick off with probably our CAO's favorite presentation of the year. This one is by Teed Saunders and Doyle Accounting and Taxation Services. It's a presentation review of the 2021 municipal financial audit for the public's knowledge. We did have a session with Teed Saunders and Doyle, a one-hour session where council was able to get a detailed breakdown, have an opportunity to ask a lot of questions. But we wanted to make this presentation available for the public and give council a second opportunity to ask any questions. So at this particular time, we'll pass the floor over.
Thank you, Mayor Henderson. Thank you, counsel, for having me here this evening. And I will also share my screen so that we can have a quick... No, we're not going to be an hour tonight. This will be a fairly high-level overview of the audited statements where we did spend a fair bit of time last Thursday. So just a quick overview of what our job is as the external auditors. We come in and examine the books, the internal records of the town to make sure that the town is in compliance with what we call Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. And once we've done our audit, we then issue these audited financials, which you see here. And to that, we include is our independent auditor's report, which goes at near the front of those statements. And so this just indicates that we did, in this, there's the, what we call our opinion paragraph, that we did find that the town's accounting records were in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards. So that's kind of what the province looks for when we send the copy of these audited statements off to them to make sure that everything's in good standing. The first statement I'll run through is just the statement of operations for the year. So this would be the 12 months' worth of activity for fiscal 2021. The top section there is revenue. So revenue this year was at $6,543,000, with the largest portion of that being the property tax warrant, which was at $4.2 million compared to $4.144 million last year. So property tax warrant was up about $59,000 over the year before. The next section would be the expenditures. And I should also point out, too, that included there is also the budget. So these are the budget amounts for the various items. Total expenditures for the town this year were at $5,938,000. So up from last year was at $5.29 million. And with the expenses at $5.9 million, revenue at $6.5, for public sector accounting standard purposes, the surplus this year was $604,745. Now, with respect to that, under Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards, there are a few differences with what we call the funding surplus. And the funding surplus would be basically what you base your annual property tax warrant on, as well as setting your user rates for water and sewer. So in your general operating fund this year, the funding surplus in that account was $69,334. And in the water and sewer operating fund, it was $19,989. So there are a few differences between what we're showing as a public sector surplus versus the actual called funding surplus. The unrealized gain on investments, so that's within the reserve funds. So every year, we make an adjustment to those from the book value to market. And at the end of '21, stock market was up, so there was what we call an unrealized gain on your reserve funds of $167,000. So overall, the public sector accounting surplus this year was $771. Surplus at the end of last year was $26,288. So when we add this year's surplus to that, it puts your surplus at the end of the year at $27,600,000. And so what the surplus is quickly, on the statement of consolidated financial position, you can see there that your assets at the end of the year, which would include cash, your accounts receivable, and your reserve fund investments, those totaled $4.865 million. Under your liabilities, there was trade, what we call accrued liabilities, trade payables are at $799,000. Deferred revenue, that's basically funds that have been received by the town and for specific purposes and have not been spent yet. So when those projects happen, the money gets drawn down out of that deferred revenue. Long-term debt was at $5.3 million this year. That's the debentures that the town has. And this year, we added... There was new debenture, new borrowing of $755,000, and then repayments of $506,000. And then there's a retirement allowance liability there. That would be for retiring employees for future, that's a future liability. So when we add those up, total liabilities are at $7,190,000. And when we subtract that off of the financial assets of the town, there's a net debt there of $2,324,000. And then really where your accumulated surplus comes in, it's really the capital assets or what we call tangible capital assets of the town. So that includes the things, buildings, roads, streets, land. And you can see there, the cost base of the town's assets is $50,690,000. And then what we're doing is each year, we depreciate or amortize some of those assets to recognize that they are a year older. And so to date, there's been $20,689,000 recognized as amortization, which puts the net value of the town's assets at $29,379,000. So when we say accumulated surplus, what we're really, what it really is, it's the town's equity that it has in its assets and its tangible capital assets. One of the other things that we look at, too, as part of the audit, we look at your debt service ratio. So that's basically the percentage of the town's budget, or sorry, the expenditures that goes towards servicing the debt. So debt servicing would include interest payments as well as principal payments. And so this year, in your general fund, that debt service is at 4.9%. And kind of the cap or the, where the province would, you know, the higher end of that would be considered around 20%. So at 4.9%, the town is well under what the province would consider to be a high debt service. And in your water and sewer fund, the debt service is at 23.4%. And underwater and sewer guidelines, you can actually, that service cap is about 50%. So you're well within that one, that one as well. So we always like to look at that just to make sure that you're not, that a town or municipality is not over-leveraging itself with debt. So the town is in good shape with respect to that. So that's where to get to the body of the statements. As you mentioned, Mayor, we did go through them in a fair bit of detail on Thursday. So if anybody has any questions on these statements, I'd be more than happy to address that.
Thank you, appreciate that, Peter. Is there any questions from staff or any member of council? Again, we did have the opportunity to ask several. There is no question, so I wanted to say thank you very much. And I know that some of the things that we highlighted in the presentation was that the town's debt service ratio is well within kind of industry standards, actually a little bit lower when it comes to the operational side. And the other thing that was highlighted is that, you know, the staff did an excellent job in helping prepare for it. So I wanted to kind of highlight those as two things that you highlighted with us on our hour presentation. So there's no questions, but I'll let you know, Peter, that the first motion that we have this evening is actually approving it. I don't know if it makes sense for him to stay online. If there's not really any questions, I don't know if there's a need, your comment for you? I don't think there's a need, anyone need him to be online for that motion? Okay, you can jump off if you want, or stick around and enjoy a very exciting meeting ahead.
I think my supper's ready, so.
All right.
Well, thank you very much. And just a second, what you said, Mayor, just thanks, big thanks to Chris and the town staff as well. It makes our job a lot easier when the accounting records are in good shape, which they were.
Thanks again for walking us through it. Have a good week.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on. The next presentation will be made by Tressa Bevington in regards to Compass Housing, Inc. It is the site plan presentation for 302 Moa Drive. I see that Tressa's on as well, so we'll pass the floor over to Tressa. Tressa, you're good. And you're still muted, I believe.
Let's try, how's this?
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you so much for your time tonight and letting me present the site plan that I have worked really hard on with my team at Spitfire. And also, I want to say a big thank you to Xander for all of his help guiding us to make sure that we're making the right decisions and the right placement of the building on the lot. I assume, yeah, thank you, Paul, for putting that up there. So what you see is the location on Moa Drive. The total lot is two acres that we have on there. So we've really worked really hard to maximize the space while still keeping a lot of the trees that are on site and a lot of the nature that we do have. We just want to make sure that that's highlighted on there as well because it's a little difficult to see with the site plan. As you'll see, the building that we have, it's 385 feet by 53 feet for the 42 units that we do have planned in there. We also have, you'll notice, parking spaces that we have. As per St. Andrews requirements, we would need 53 parking spots, but we have 60 parking spots on site. We just think it's important to have as much parking as possible since there is nowhere else to park. They can't really park on the street on Moa Drive or anything, so we want to make sure we have lots of parking for our tenants on there. The way that it was designed and placed on site, we do not need any variances from the town, which is a big, which is a big help and a big thanks to Xander to help us to reach that goal. Some other highlights that I just wanted to point out is we do have our amenity space at the lower part of the lot that will be there, but we will also have balconies in each apartment. They're just not represented yet. So I wanted to make sure that we had amenity space as per the bylaws, required bylaws. Also, the other thing that I wanted to point out is there's a little squiggly line to the right of the trail. Paul, I don't know if you can zoom in there, but that's our proposed trail, as we did say that we would have a trail connecting the subdivision to Moa Drive so that people are able to access if they're walking through, if they're walking through to Moa Drive. That's really all that I have to say about the site plan. I'm really eager to hear what council thinks, and I'm here for any questions that anyone might have on this, but I just thank you for the opportunity to present the site plan to you guys tonight.
Thank you very much for sharing that. Counsel does have a copy of that as well. I think Mr. Nopper's trying to zoom in.
It's a little squiggly.
Yeah, I'm looking, the one that I can't see is the trail right now. I don't know if you could help us with that, Mr. Nopper. Can you guys see it?
Yeah, it says, it says proposed trail like halfway to the right of the parking lot. I don't know if Paul can, it's very tiny. There's like five squiggly lines there.
Oh, it is the yellow. Okay, all right. I do see that. Perfect.
No, the yellow, no, the yellow is snow storage. It's actually like, see the five squiggly lines? Paul, if you just move up, see where it's like, where the, it's like where the main entrance of the building is, right there. There, yes, Paul, you got it.
Oh, sorry, I got you now. It's in the back center of it. Yeah, I was looking towards, towards that yellow box, so it's in the back center.
Yeah, that's the snow storage area.
So if you go, if you go right in there, yeah, that's it, right? You're past it now, yeah.
Yes, okay.
All right, so that basically people would just walk into the driveway and then around to access. Okay, perfect. That was one of my questions as well. The other one was about landscaping in the front. Sounds like you're going to try to work with the deer-eating trees in the front of the property?
Yes, yeah, that's our plan.
And the other thing I noticed is when we originally talked about it, I didn't know if the parking would be in the front or the back, but it looks like, as we could clearly see here, it's in the back facing the building versus neighboring properties. And counsel, do you have any specific questions on the site plan? I will have questions for staff about next steps, but any member of council have any questions on this? All right, just...
Just looking down in the corner there, sorry.
Yep.
I can't quite make it out in the black and yellow zone. Is that like an electrical zone or?
That's a snow storage, like if there's any snow pile or something as we're cleaning up for winter.
And just, where is Anchors Landing like in relation to this? We were trying to zoom in.
Yes, sorry about that. It was dated.
It's the MR2 zone.
Yeah, I get, I get that, but like, like roughly, how far, how far over is the?
It's about, like, there's still going to be a tree line between the two properties.
Okay.
Yeah, and then where it's, where the black and yellow is, like, I would say it's not even close to that. It's still, the parking lot is quite a ways away from there still. So, because we want to keep that line of trees between the two properties.
If I'm not mistaken, there's a, there's kind of a ditch through there, a lot of water drains down in through there. It might be good to preserve that.
Yes, oh, yeah, no, and we need to for the runoff, but yeah, that's where we have a ditch there. And like I said, there is that tree line that we want to keep, keep in there to separate the two properties.
Oh, okay. And just a question, because I think it makes it less intrusive to the neighborhood, but right now, currently on that lot, there's two entrances to it. I note that you're building this one using one. Was there a particular strategy behind that?
We just thought if we did one, it was just easier to manage traffic.
Okay.
So we just thought just having one coming in and out, and then also you don't have people driving in and driving out of the other driveway.
That makes sense, not a turnaround spot.
Correct.
Okay, for staff, I guess, oh, sorry. Oh, I got counsel, thank you. I see a small hand up there now, Counselor Hurdle. Sorry about that.
That's okay, it's been a long time since I've looked forward. I get it, it's usually to the left. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I was curious, because I see where the parking lot exits onto Moa, and I'm wondering if it makes more sense to do it that way or to make more of an intersection with Thomas? If you've looked at those as both proposals and found this way to be safer?
Xander, do you want to speak to that? Because Xander and I spoke about that when we were designing the site.
I can really only speak to what would be required in the zoning bylaw, and it doesn't, it, there would be a requirement if there was a road on that same side, but because it's on the, only on the other side, it doesn't really matter how far the driveway is from it. And I'm not really a traffic engineer. I don't, I don't think Thomas is a very frequently used street, so I, my guess is with a stop sign, that would probably be, be fine at the corner there, but I think given, yeah, the traffic volume on Thomas, it's, it's not a huge concern either way.
Am I guessing that the advantage of putting it where it is, is it gives, it gives more buffer to the SR zone on that side? So if you put the driveway in, it would be closer to that. I know that it would be still within, but it would be a lot closer to the house at that point versus...
Yeah, it definitely, it definitely would be. So that, that is an advantage of having it on this side.
Yeah.
Thanks, Xander.
Tressa, just a quick question. We had talked about at some point that you were going to have a walkway that would go like out to the curb so that you could transfer, then we could put a crosswalk across to the sidewalk, which is on the other side of the road. I don't see that shown on the site plan, but I could be missing it.
No, we didn't, we didn't, and put that in yet, but that's at the top of our minds with planning where that is. But we didn't, you're not missing it, it's not on there right now.
Okay, thank you.
For planning for the town, that almost makes sense to take it from their driveway to directly across Thomas Avenue, because I don't think you'd put a crosswalk right before the inner, before Thomas Avenue intersection, would you?
We'd have to look, your worship. The only thing I'd argue against that, if you get it away from the driveway, it might make it a little safer.
Okay.
You know, if people aren't seeing, but you're right, everything will have to be considered, but we had talked about it.
Would that be a very small distance? Yeah.
Yeah. And whatever's easiest for the proponent, too, because like you said, there's a tree line there along Moa that we don't necessarily want to cut down in order, or cut partially in order to put an entryway. So we'll look at it, I was just seeing if it had been planned on at this point, but that's okay, we can follow up in the development stage.
Perfect. So for next steps, for the public's information, I think we're going to be doing a second hearing of objections is what council decided. Question is, is should the design on the outside be determined before we go to that so people can see not only the site plan, but also what it's going to look and feel like?
That'd be our recommendation, your worship. It's just, you know, there's still a lot of interest in the community about the final, and so this is one step that'll help the neighbors, but it's still to get an idea. She had mentioned about that they're going to have patios on several of the units, which hadn't been shown in the earlier plans. So, you know, really, we need like a good outside look and kind of a final outside design to see what's there, I'd say, before going to the public hearing again.
Perfect. So the next step should be, if that works to the developers, would be the outside design, and then that comes before council, and then we set the hearing objections, or is that?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that work for everybody here? All right, is there any other questions? Counsel Goumaschel.
Further to Xander's point, not being a traffic engineer, there are existing, there's existing two entrances, so I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be, lead to less congestion if there, and easier for the residents and da-da-da, if it would continue to be two entrances, because there's already breaks in the, in the hedge and in the sidewalk culvert or the curb, rather, so.
I think it's a, I think it's a bit of a...
Does that extend down further than the second?
I think the concerns is it becomes a loop around, like people cut in there to loop around and go back, you know what I mean? It becomes, if you have two ways, it just becomes almost like a drive-through, you know what I mean? But...
Not what you want?
Well, no, but for just general people driving in and stuff like that, I don't know if it's necessarily what they'd be looking for versus control, but it is a, it is a valid point, is you'd have half the traffic going through one driveway in theory, right? As a result of that?
We just felt that having people, like, knowing, some people, they'll just drive through it as a, a drive-through or, like you said, as a turnaround, and we just want to minimize any high-flying traffic through there since there are going to be families living there as well. So that's why we just stuck with the one driveway.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, it should be noted, too, your worship, that in between the neighbor, as you approach the outskirts of town, there's a significantly less room to the property line, so it'd be significantly closer to them than to the neighbor on the town side, closer to the town center. So, you know, it'd be less infringement to this side than it's going to be the other. Yeah.
Okay.
Your worship, you have Counselor Hurdle?
Yeah, Counselor Hurdle?
Thank you, Mr. Nopper, and your worship. So I guess my question is still off the same topic, and sorry to delay by the point. When I, when I look at this, I see a lot of people, if you're going to say Tim Hortons, for example, on foot, and as a council, I think we want to encourage more people to be on foot and possibly on a bicycle for active transportation reasons. So they have to cross the street there. And my concern, again, just to say, is if you're crossing the street and you're looking for traffic on Moa, you're looking for traffic in and out of that driveway, you're looking for traffic from Thomas as well. Is there a concern there? And I think I'd just like to get ahead of that if there is one.
Yeah, it's, again, not a traffic expert either. The way that I look at this is I access through the bar road every day, and the bar road goes directly onto Moa Drive, and you've got Ministers Island there with a tourist attraction that attracts over 30,000 visitors a year, and plus, there's probably 100-plus homes now in that subdivision, well, maybe not quite 100, but there's 50-plus homes in the subdivision. With Anchors Landing, you probably are close to 100 different dwelling units. And I personally, when I go in the morning, I know there's two ways out of there, but I've never been backed up any more than three cars any time of year, and I can usually pull out there within 30 seconds. So although this would add more traffic to it, I just, I don't really think it would be a congestion issue at all. And the fact that it's affordable housing, it makes me think that probably half the owners of these, or sorry, tenants probably won't have vehicles anyway, they'll be on foot, would be, again, that's an assumption, but I don't think everyone that lives there is going to have a car. But, yeah, I don't have the answer. I guess the real question is, is it better to come out directly towards Thomas Avenue is what you're wondering, so that way it's like a two-way, a stop on each side versus right before, and I think is what you're wondering. Is that correct?
Well, no, I'm just more concerned, like, if we do look at it this way, and if you're on foot and you don't have clear guidelines of how, where to cross the street there, you've got to be looking at multiple different angles. Is that going to be a safety concern if you're on foot or on a bicycle? I just think we should probably possibly just look and see what the sightlines would be with this, and just be aware that there could be a safety concern.
Yep, I think looking at the sightlines would be good. It is the existing driveway, pretty much of what was there for the motel. I don't know, Xander, if you have any idea on the sightlines or any concerns?
I think it would be possible to run a crosswalk from the edge of, it would, it would just sort of run parallel with Thomas, and it would, it could meet either further down, but I think a clear crosswalk, I think that would solve any safety issues. There was clear, clearly signed that this is the pedestrian crossing and, you know, look both ways. You could run it from the corner of Thomas to where that driveway is, and it would, it would be a straight line. So I think as long as it's clear, there wouldn't be a huge safety concern.
Perfect. Oh, Counselor Heenan.
Yes, your worship and counsel, probably this question's more directed to Steve, Counselor Neal, about fire protection with just one driveway. Is there an issue with coming in and then turning about and coming back out, like if we had a fire?
That's a good question. I don't really see right offhand any issues there.
No, that's good.
Looking at that typically, again, from a public safety standpoint with regards to fire service, you're looking for coverage on three sides.
Right.
Which you would have there via Moa Drive and the driveway and the parking lot behind, so I think this would meet the standards.
Thank you, Counselor Neal. Thank you, your worship.
Any other member of council? Are you saying, one moment, Mrs. Bevington, or you got a question?
I just want to make a comment. One second.
I saw her hand up.
One moment, one sec.
We'll give her just a moment.
I just need one second to say something. Sorry, I'm good now. I just wanted to make a point about asking about the outside of the building, because that process is very different than what we prepared for you for the site today. And that would take us, that's going to take me into December before I'm going to have the outside design of the building, because as building, the outside of the building design, it's also the interior of the building, all the mechanical, all of the systems, the electrical, everything needs to be done at the same time to make sure it works with the... to be done at the same time to make sure it works with the design of the outside of the building. So if that's the case, this puts the project timeline, it might put it off schedule than what we were hoping for, because for the passing of the rezoning, which is what the site plan is for today, this is what I needed for the site plan. So I just wanted to throw it out to council to just see if there would be a reconsidering, and maybe if there's some footage that we could put in the development agreement, so that that's not held up, because I need more time to work on that, and I will definitely not have that ready for October 17th.
Guess I'll look over to staff and Xander. I think the concern would be to have a hearing objections is the first thing that probably be asked at councils, what is it going to look like? Would that be, would that be the challenge that's before us right now?
Yeah, because there's also been a lot of people concerned about its fitting into the landscape, like, you know, a lot of people referring to the Tim Hortons project that took place, you know, 20 years ago, and how it was changed in order to fit in the neighborhood. So without that, there'll probably be a lot of, you know, people concerned about what that's going to look like. I'm not sure, well, and sympathetic, I can see that they were looking for that, and I mean, we've had it with the Bridle Path was able to give us some stuff, so I'm not exactly sure how to overcome, but I've got concerns if it isn't available, it's not going to be something that makes the public really happy.
Okay, so I think either way, it'll have to, go ahead.
Mayor, sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to say, too, that anything that we designed, what I put out to you guys before was a rendering from a place in Moncton. I just wanted to show, just to indicate, to let people know that it was going to be two floors, and it wasn't going to be higher than the two floors. But anything past that, I spoke to Xander about this as well, but for passing this, because I'm not on the town plat, like the difference with Bridle Path is that they're in the historic district of downtown, whereas I'm not in the historic district of downtown, and of course, I'm going to make the building look really nice, and it's going to fit into the area, it's going to be a beautiful home for 42 new families. But I just don't want to get the project get off, off my schedule for something that, at the end of the day, I'm going to be working with the town on this anyways, but for this process, for the development agreement and for rezoning the site, I needed the site plan, which I have today. So I just don't want to get off schedule just because of something that I might, you know, that might cause me to get off track when, at the end of the day, as long as I'm adhering to the bylaws that the town has, there will be no, there won't be a difference.
Okay, so either way, there's, there's no motion before us for a hearing of objections. So what I'd say is maybe take this offline, have some conversations with, with Ms. Bevington, and find out what your recommendation is to council, because we're going to have to discuss it probably in two weeks anyway, is the assumption, because there's no motion for a hearing of objections anyway, so. Or is there one?
There, yeah.
Sorry, there is one? I thought it was Bridle Path.
2006, it's your first one.
2006.
Because it's supposed to be October 17th, and that's what I was...
Oh, that's right. It is 2006.
That's what I was preparing to, but honestly, that's going to take a few months. And what I'm trying to say is, we are adhering to all the bylaws. We don't need any variances for our property for the site plan. And if we wait for my design to come out and to have public opinion on that, which at the end of the day, I'm going to be adhering to all the bylaws and all the variances, and it's going to be a really nice-looking building and fit into the, the nature and the structure of the land, I just don't want to delay my project, because that's going to be, that will put everything off of all the timelines that we've been working for.
Okay, well, we'll, I guess we'll have to debate that under the, that motion would be the time. Mr. Spear?
Well, your worship, there's, there's still a bit of an issue, because as our practice in the past, we've been not doing third reading of the rezoning until we have a development agreement in place. So all this has got to be in place anyway before we go to third reading, so I'm not exactly sure. I'm sympathetic, but it's, you know, the recommendation from the lawyers in the past has always been not to go to third reading till the development agreement is in place. And if we have a development agreement in place, we need those plans anyway.
Yeah.
Full set of drawings, so I'm not exactly sure where you want to go with this, but the advice is, if you're going to a meeting, really, it was about the meeting of objections. She's meeting part of the zoning bylaw, but the zoning bylaw, I believe, says that a development agreement has to be in place, and if that's the case, she needs another set of drawings. Your worship.
Just, I'll sort of tell you the legal requirements. So the Community Planning Act, which governs these things, council has a lot of power in rezonings and can pretty much have anything they request in a development agreement. There's no specific requirement to have renderings or elevations or any of those things in there, but it has been the town's practice in the past to have those in there. There may be a way to set certain requirements in the development agreement. Not that I'm particularly recommending this one, but you could have a requirement for adequate facsimiles of traditional materials on the outside. That would be something more for the Historic Business District. There may be a way to have a development agreement that sets parameters to some degree, but it may be something that council just needs to discuss more.
Yeah, okay. So I guess council, what's your pleasure on this one? Really, you can't do the develop, you can't do the development agreement until you have this, or just what Xander said, it just could be that, that broad?
I guess, your worship, we're going to debate it a little bit, maybe you try to move it forward. We had the presenter here, so let's go on forward. But, I mean, at the end of the day, the recommendation is that the development agreement and the third reading of the rezoning happen at the same time. And so what, Ms. Bevington is hoping to have the rezoning in place, and then work on the development agreement to come with it, but it's, really, our strongest tool is on the rezoning. Once it's rezoned, then it, then you lose a little bit of the power, so.
I get what you're saying. Council, we're going to have to debate this one later. Is there any other questions?
Will we be taking it off to debate it, the MP 2006?
Well, when we go back to that motion, that's when we would technically debate it. And of course, there is an option to table and get our head around that as well, because, again, we'll have to see, see what council, I don't want to skew anything, council's pleasure is on this one.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think we'll revisit it at the motion. Does that make sense to everybody? All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Bevington. Appreciate the presentation, answering the questions, as well as the, the site plan as well this evening. Thank you very much, and we'll be, we'll be talking about it later this evening as well.
Thank you.
All right. Last meeting, we did take care of approval of amendments, communications, and the staff report, so we can skip over those for this meeting. So that takes us right into the introduction consideration and passing of bylaws and motions. And the first one is under Finance and Administration. Deputy Mayor Akeji.
Thank you, your worship and council. FA 220911. It's 2021 Town of St. Andrews audited financial statements, Teed, Saunders, Doyle accountants and advisors. So the background is this. The audited 2021 financial statements were presented earlier this meeting by Peter Logan, CPA/CA of Teed, Saunders, Doyle accountants and advisors. The firm is using an unqualified clean opinion that the statements present, present fairly the financial position of the town at the end of 2021. So my motion is that council approves the 2021 audit financial statements as presented by our auditors, Teed, Saunders, Doyle accountants and advisors, and I so move, your worship.
Thank you. I have a second for that motion. Counselor Hurdle, give one to the TV, Counselor Neal. All right, any discussion on this motion? We didn't have any more questions to the presenter, so I will call the question. Oh, Mr. Spear, you want to speak?
I'd like to speak for hours, your worship, as you know, this is fascinating stuff as accountants, but I just wanted to let the public know, after it's approved tonight, there's some signatures required and binding, so it probably won't be available for public consumption until Friday or early next week, but they're there, and we'll make it even available on our website as soon as we get it all together.
Thank you very much. So I'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody that has been approved. We'll go to the next one.
Thank you. So FA 220915, and it's the 2021 Town of St. Andrews Annual Municipal Government Governance Report. So the background is this. Pursuant to Section 105 of the Local Governance Act and Regulation 2018-54, municipal governments are responsible for developing a year-in-review report. This report contains general information about the town and St. Andrews meetings, provisions of grants, and the cost of services that are provided by the town. The document also contains a copy of the 2021 audited financial statements of the Town of St. Andrews. The report needs to be approved by council and will be placed on the town website for public view, and a hard copy can be provided at Town Hall for public view. So the motion is this, that council accepts the 2021 Town of St. Andrews Annual Municipal Governance Report as per the Local Governance Act, Act, Section 105 and Regulation 2018-54, and I so move this, your worship.
Thank you. And a second for that motion. Go left, Counselor Heenan. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody has been approved, and we're into your last motion.
Thank you very much, your worship. FA 220917, and this is the medical equipment purchase for St. Andrews Wellness Center. So the background is this. The St. Andrews Wellness Center has approached the staff with a request to purchase six new pieces of equipment. They are requesting support for portable blood pressure machine, the current machine does not stay charged, and the model is no longer serviced, and it is 15 years old. Two ophthalmoscope sets used to check retinas, back of eyes, optic nerves, et cetera. Two gynecological, gynecology, oh boy, specific lights.
Gynecology.
And new photocopier, well, that's easy to say, new photocopier, printer fax machine. Please see the attached documents to this motion and report for a medical equipment note, quote, on the equipment being requested. But the total cost with tax is $5,008.72. It is estimated that the new photocopier would be approximately $500. Staff have reviewed the budget for 2022 and have identified $10,000 that was set aside for doctor recruitment that could be used this year to purchase the requested equipment items. So the motion is this, that council approves the purchase of one portable blood pressure machine, two ophthalmological scopes, two gynecological specific spec lights, and photocopier fax machine at a cost of $5,700, HST included, for the St. Andrews Wellness Center, and I so move, your worship.
Thank you. A second for that motion, Counselor Goumichel. Any discussion on this one?
I think it's, I think it's very, yeah, I think.
Go ahead.
Those machines are necessary, especially the ones 15 years old. It's not as old as us, but it is old.
Any other comment? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving this motion, please signify again by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is everybody, so that motion has been carried as well, and we're on to public works. I hope that Counselor Blanchard is not here this evening, and Counselor Neal has nothing under his portfolio, and he's coughing, so I thought I might just put it to him at this point.
Thank you, your worship. This is FA 220916. The subject is council support for the application to the Natural Infrastructure Fund. Infrastructure Canada has released the Small Projects Fund through Natural Infrastructure Fund from the Government of Canada. This fund supports projects that use natural or hybrid approaches to protect the natural environment, support healthy and resilient communities, and contribute to economic growth and jobs. Using natural and hybrid infrastructure systems, the fund intends to bring benefits from projects for increasing climate change resilience, mitigating carbon emissions, improving the environment, contributing to cleaner air and water, protecting and preserving biodiversity and wildlife habitats, and promoting people's access to nature. The shoreline of St. Andrews has been identified in the Climate Change Adaptation Plan from 2019, municipal plan zoning bylaw through the sea level rise maps, and the recently updated provincial sea level rise maps, as in need of priority protections against climate change. Staff is recommending that the Town of St. Andrews apply to the fund for enhancing and protecting the shorelines of St. Andrews for climate change resilience, protecting and improving biodiversity, and people's access to nature. The goal would be to raise and secure the shorelines of St. Andrews along street ends, and raise and secure the shoreline along Indian Point Park to the nature preserve. Staff has been in contact with the Pasma Kwadi First Nations and the Nature Trust of New Brunswick for support on the project. The fund would cover up to 80% of the costs of the $1 million in funding. The motion reads that council supports the application to the Natural Infrastructure Fund through Infrastructure Canada for a coastal shoreline protection project for climate change adaptation and sea level rise using natural and hybrid infrastructure in the Town of St. Andrews, and I so move, your worship.
Thank you very much. A second for that. Deputy Mayor Akeji, discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, so I'll call the question. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody. That motion has been carried as well, and you're on to the next one, Counselor Neal.
Thank you, your worship. The next one is PW 220911, and the subject is surplus public works equipment for 2022. The background reads that the Town of St. Andrews is looking to move the following pieces of equipment to surplus for the purpose of selling to the public. A Toyota forklift, an Evanrude 25-horsepower outboard motor, a Mercury 25-horsepower outboard motor, a 1987 Olympia ice resurfacer, 16-foot wooden sea boat, and a 2012 Chevrolet Colorado four-wheel-drive truck. The equipment is in various states of repair and will be sold as is, where is. So the motion reads that council declares the following equipment items to be surplus for the purposes of sale. One, the Toyota forklift, operational. Two, the Evanrude 25-horsepower outboard motor. Three, the Mercury 25-horsepower outboard motor. Four, the 1987 Olympia ice resurfacer. Five, the 16-foot wooden sea boat. And six, the 2012 Chevy Colorado four-wheel-drive truck. And I so move, your worship.
Thank you. And once again, we've got a second with Deputy Mayor Akeji, any, sorry, with Counsel Goumichel. Any questions on this one? Okay, might be a chance for someone to own their own Zamboni. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I see Counsel Hurdle's hand as well. It might have disappeared in the background. Are you in favor as well, Counsel? Perfect. 5-0. Someone has a chance to get a Zamboni. All right. Thank you very much, Counselor Neal. Counselor Blanchard owes you one. At this time, we're going to go on to business, tourism, heritage, and culture, and I will be declaring a conflict of interest on this one, so if you just give me a moment to step aside, I'll look for Deputy Mayor Akeji to just chair this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Just give him time to get out of the room. He's old.
Should be mine next, though.
Okay, Counselor Hurdle, would you please run us through this?
Thank you very much. I'm just going to test that you guys can hear me. You had, I'm not sure. Thank you very much. Excuse me, this is reference BTHC 220902, and the subject is the request for peddler's permit to St. Andrews Brewing Company, Oktoberfest of 2022. The Town of St. Andrews has received a request from the St. Andrews Brewing Company to bring in a food truck as part of their 2022 Oktoberfest celebration scheduled for October 1st and 2nd. They are looking to operate a food truck 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. each day, which will serve sausages on a bun and schnitzel. The truck would be located behind the brewery along King Street. Under Bylaw Number 75, a bylaw regulating and licensing peddlers and transient traders, the clerk has the authorization to issue permits under this bylaw. Councils of the past have put a moratorium on food trucks in town with the goal of driving traffic to local restaurants and establishments. Typically, food truck permits are only issued for larger community events like paddle fest and indulge. In following the bylaw, staff would not recommend a permit be issued based on the previous decisions of council and allowances for food trucks only at large community events. decisions of council and allowances for food trucks only at large community events. As the Oktoberfest is not designated large community event, the permit should not be issued based on bylaw processes. Staff has reached out to local restaurants within the area to poll them on the potential of a food truck. From comments received, they are in support of a food truck as it does not compete with already established menus and served items. If council wishes to allow a food truck for the event, a motion granting permission to allow a food truck would be needed, whether we allow it or don't allow it. And the motion before us is that council either allows or doesn't allow a permit to be issued under the Bylaw 75A, a bylaw to regulating and licensing peddlers and transient traders to the St. Andrews Brewing Company for October 1st and 2nd of 2022. We have to figure that out before we move on.
So we need a seconder, and then we need to discuss whether allows or does not allow, or does that go first?
Why don't we just use one or the other? Why don't we just say allows, then you can defeat it, just so there's clarity instead of putting either or there?
Okay, so the motion before us then would be that the council allows a permit to be issued under Bylaw 75A, a bylaw to have regulating and licensing peddlers and transient traders to the St. Andrews Brewing Company for October 1st and 2nd of 2022, and I so move.
Okay, thank you. We need a seconder. Councilor Gomishel has seconded that. Any discussion on this, council? Councilor Gomishel?
Just for clarity, it says that staff has reached out to local restaurants, and from the comments received, they are in support of the food truck for this weekend. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Heenan?
Yes, Deputy Mayor and Council. I was just looking at the calendar, and that's for Saturday and Sunday night, I do believe. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
I just wonder about the timeframe of 12:00 a.m. Like, I'm not sure, I really personally think that that's a little late. I have no problem with the food truck area, I just think that 12:00 a.m. is a little late, especially on a Sunday evening. I mean, that would be my only objection. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hurdle. Anybody else? Councilor Neal?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think I would tend to agree with Councilor Hurdle on that one. Again, I think there, if I remember, their typical operating hours are 11:00 p.m. So again, I don't think I'd have an issue with the 12:00 a.m. on the Saturday night, but perhaps on Sunday night, we could reduce it a little bit.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't really have any objection to it. If the local restaurants are in favor of it, they're, I don't see any opposition.
Am I allowed to speak? No. When I'm in the chair?
Yeah.
Council, would you be upset if I spoke? Remember that other councils have defeated this, that it's not a big, one of the bigger events that we have? So I just want to remind you of that, I'm not, I can't vote because I'm in the chair, but I just wanted to bring that forward, that other councils had defeated it because of only keeping them, that this would open the door for other events to request a food truck. And yes, Councilor Hurdle, I see your hand, so you may speak.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Just in the terms of the background, I'm a little unclear how this is worded here. Does the moratorium exist as part of the bylaw?
I'll have to look at staff for that. Counsel.
It's essentially, all, any food trucks have to get a peddler's permit, and it's not built into the bylaw, but it's been understood that in most instances, we're not to issue them because it's in competition, and it's not necessarily just food trucks, if there's any type of business that sets up, that's kind of in direct competition with local resellers. We don't tend to allow them, that we'd aim them towards the farmer's market, otherwise, just because of the limited season and stuff, we've used that as our overall scope in when issuing these permits.
So just that I'm clear, the bylaw does not restrict or permit food trucks, so there's no bylaws, just basically been a preference of previous councils to limit them to drive business towards restaurants in the community, but in this case, we have restaurants in the community saying that they're okay with, just wanted to be clear on that.
That's correct. The bylaw isn't specific enough about what is or what isn't allowed, it's kind of at the will of council and staff.
Okay. Does that make it clear to you, Councilor Hurdle?
Thank you, it does.
Okay, and Councilor Heenan?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, we also have to realize that this is a tenant of our town as well, so it's not like a food truck coming in independently in total competition to our restaurants and bars. These people are part of our town and have an establishment, so it's like an add-on for them, so it's not like, it's not like me coming in and asking for a wiener truck. It's because I haven't got anything in town, these people are part of the town, so to me, it makes a little more sense to think about it, at least of putting it in. Thank you.
I just have a question for Mr. Spear. If we change it that on Sunday, they do not, they cannot go past their 11 o'clock, as Councilor Neal suggested, would that be, do we just add an amendment, or?
Yeah, I'd amend the motion to say that the operatings are from, I guess, from 12 to 12 on Saturday and 12 to 11 on Sunday, if that's, or whatever council wants to put, but it should be an amendment to the motion so we can make it as a condition of the peddler's permit.
Friendly amended, is that all right with you, Councilor Neal? Since you, you were the one that brought the amendment forward. Counsel, is that all right with you?
Absolutely.
Counselor Hurdle? It's okay with you?
Deputy Mayor, you'd have to, I guess that's the motion, then you should, we'll need a mover and a second to amend that.
To amend it?
Yeah.
Even though it's a friendly amendment? No?
It's more official than a friendly, I guess, sorry.
Okay, so we need, we need to have it amended that for Saturday night, the hours will stay, but for Sunday, it will be from 12 to 11. So could I have someone amend that? Councilor Neal has agreed to amend it, seconded by Councilor Heenan. So now we have to vote on the amendment first. So council, for the amendment of doing that, all those in favor? And that's everyone, so it's carried.
I apologize, I meant to ask a question if I could squeeze it in.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I'm sorry, I thought you were vote, you were voting with us.
Yeah, no, sorry.
Okay, Councilor Hurdle, go ahead and ask your question before we vote. Forget that vote.
My question is, are we aware, are we aware of anything that would, that's happening on Sunday night that might correspond with the request to have it 12 o'clock? Like, is there like a partnership, partnering event of some kind that might mitigate our response here? You just, the request came to us just the way that it is.
Is there anything you know of, Mr. Spear, on Sunday night?
Not to our knowledge. The request came in, and we brought it forward as was, so we're not sure. I guess at that late hour, I'm not sure if there's anything that would go on, but we can ask that question.
From the indelible.
To see, you can bring it forward, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so now can we vote on it? So council, are you in favor of the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and contrary-minded? So it's carried. Now we go back to the motion itself, to allow them to have the, with the amendment. Do we have to have that again approved? Okay, thank you. So council, to vote on this, to allow them to do it, all those in favor?
With the amendment, aye.
With the amendment, yes.
Aye.
Aye, and contrary-minded? So it is carried. Thank you, Councilor Hurdle, and you can bring the mayor back.
Oh, he's back.
He's, no, he's going to the washroom, I think. He is too, little sneak. So shall we wait for him or go on to the next one? Which would be, Councilor Hurdle? No, that's Heenan, Councilor Heenan. There's nothing with Recreation and Community Services or Council, Gomishel?
Yes, there is.
Oh, yes, there is, there's the new one, so we need to add that one too. So, Councilor Gomishel?
Reference R C S 220908 dated September 15th, submitted by myself, and the subject is Appointment of Manager of Recreation for the Town of St. Andrews. And the background reads, "Staff and council have completed the hiring process to fill the new position of manager of recreation for the Town of St. Andrews. We are proud to introduce Mr. William Kernahan as the new manager of recreation. Mr. Kernahan has a strong background in recreation, museums, and culture. His experience encompasses museums, youth programming, arts, outdoor rec, and experiential recreation tourism for all ages. His collaborative management style tied with his experiences in coaching and training staff and volunteers made Mr. Kernahan a strong candidate for selection. As part of the municipal process, council can appoint Mr. Kernahan to the position of manager of recreation. His anticipated start date is September 26, 2022." And the motion is that council appoints Mr. William Kernahan as manager of recreation for the Town of St. Andrews, and I would make that motion. Your worship.
Thank you.
Deputy worship, worship. A seconder for that motion? Councilor Neal, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and welcome aboard. I guess we'll provide more of a comment on what that looks like in an upcoming meeting, so at that, at this particular point, that will take us through business, sorry, that'll take us through business, tourism, heritage, and culture and recreation. So we're going to jump over to planning and economic development, and I will be, because of the nature of it, I will be declaring another conflict on this one, so I'll pass it back over to you, Deputy Mayor Akaji.
Thank you, your worship. Councilor Heenan, your first one. I just got to find my page.
Page 72.
Councilor Heenan, Planning and Economic Development Committee Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Council. P E D 220812, amendments, M P 20-06 to the municipal plan, M P 20-01, and Z 22-02 to zoning bylaw, Z 22-01, Compass Housing Incorporated, call for public hearings of objections. At the September 20, 2022 Regular Council Meeting, Compass Housing Incorporated provided a site plan for the property located at 302 Moat Drive for the 42-unit affordable housing project. As part of the Community Planning Act process, an additional public hearing of objection is recommended for the public to provide input on the site plan provided to council. Staff will send a notice out to residents within 100-meter area around the property and will follow all procedures for notification based on the Community Planning Act for public hearings of objection. And the motion is that council sets the date of Monday, October 17, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. at the W C O'Neal Arena Council Chambers for a public hearing of objections as per Section 111 of the Community Planning Act on zoning bylaw amendment, Z 22-02, to the Town of St. Andrews zoning bylaw, Z 22-01, for Compass Housing Incorporated at the PIT number of 01325521, 302 Moat Drive, to move from tourist commercial zone to multi-residential zone, residential two-zone. And I so move that, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilor Heenan. Could we have a seconder, please? Councilor Gomishel. Any further discussion, council? Neal, Councilor Neal, sorry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess this is a question for staff, is, just as per our discussion earlier, is it possible to go ahead with the hearing of objections and kind of separate that from the third and final reading of the?
Absolutely. You know, that, it's just kind of a best practice is that some of the questions would have been addressed in more conceptual designs, but I don't know if there's a minimum standard that Xander can ask for, for the type of information that's provided, but we just have concerns, I think, that some of the public that may attend may not have had all their questions answered, but certainly they are two independent things.
Is there anything stopping us as a council, I guess, from having a second public hearing in the event, or like, once we get the final renderings of the exterior?
Nothing's stopping you, this is the second one, by the way. This would be a third one that you'd be going, which is probably, you know, going more. Yeah, it's just whatever. I guess the concern that the proponent has, was she was looking for the total rezoning, which I'm not entirely sure we want to do or should do until we have a complete set of renderings. But, you know, we can go with the site plan she's provided, which will answer a lot of the neighborhood's questions, but she brought up about patios and things that weren't on the original plans, which will probably create a few more questions that we won't necessarily be able to answer in this meeting, but it's completely and utterly up to council how they want to proceed.
Okay, and just lastly, Ms. Bevington's not with us anymore, and I may have missed this earlier, but did she give an indication as to how long she needed for those renderings?
December.
December, she said, if she?
Yeah, she said it was about December before they'd be ready.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Council?
Well, I would say.
Oh, Xander?
There's a difference between, I mean, fully done renderings and, I mean, concepts, like, there might be an in-between ground that would answer the public's questions without needing, you know, the full, basically like CGI renderings, there could be sketches, and it would be clear that this is going to be this color. And I guess council is trying to find a balance of moving ahead with things versus having enough information, that's, that's the only kind of middle ground I could think of, is having some flexibility in the type of concepts. And, and I know from talking with Mrs. Bevington that she would want to present something to the public that does answer questions, so I don't think she'd want anything that is going to leave more questions and not be up to her standards.
Okay, thank you, Xander. Councilor Heenan?
Yes, Deputy Mayor and Council, we're walking a fine line here between achieving our goal of getting the payloader in the ground next spring and pleasing the public, and it's a very tight rope to walk, and I totally, totally understand this. Of course, there's no real compromise, we have to decide one way or the other, but I would like to see a winner on both sides, like, I'd like to see the public be able to win by making sure that it's what they want, but I'd like to see the construction company be able to continue their route as scheduled. So that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Counselor Heenan? Counselor Gomishel?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further to Councilor Heenan's points, I would be, I'd be very nervous of delaying this at all. Ms. Bevington has a long, a long proven history of producing good buildings that we can all be happy with and proud with, and she's willing to work with staff. I'd fall on the side of getting the excavator in the ground, the payloader, to use your term, in the ground, and I'm sure everyone will be quite happy with it, so I prefer not to delay things if possible. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Counselor Neal, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I guess, again, I'm just looking at the motion. Again, the motion is simply just to set a date for this public hearing, which I guess in my opinion, I'm fine with going ahead with that. Again, we still have, my suggestion would be, again, we perhaps hold off on the third reading at that moment. I'm thinking of the communications, discussions we've had with the Bridal Path Group, again, to get those sort of streetscape renderings, which, again, to Xander's points, are not sort of final drawings, but can still, I think, address a few of the concerns and questions of the public.
Okay.
And again, I think, you know, worst case, we end up having sort of another public presentation by Ms. Bevington to present that to the public and allow questions.
Thank you, Counselor Neal. Counselor Hurdle, do you have anything to add?
Well, I guess I would, I would mostly agree with Counselor Neal on this one. I'm just, you know, my initial reaction to it is, is concerned about the tone of discourse that we've had in the past in town, just, they're very sensitive to how things look, and I'd just be cautious to move too quickly ahead without some idea what that looks like, but I guess if we're just talking about, you know, setting a date, then I agree with Counselor Neal.
Then we will go to the vote. All those in favor for setting the hearing of objections for this October 17?
Yes, at 6:30.
At 6:30 here at the arena. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, Deputy Mayor.
And so that's everyone, so it's carried for the hearing of objections. Mr. Spear, you could put that on our list. Thank you very much. And we can invite the mayor back in. Thank you. Counselor Heenan, it is still your go.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
You're welcome, your worship. Welcome back.
Your worship and council, my next is P E D 220904, new Champlain housing request for proposal discussion. The Town of St. Andrews in the fall of 2021 issued a request for proposal for an affordable housing development off of Champlain Avenue at housing development off of Champlain Avenue at PIDs 15199391 and 15191554, Town-Owned Lands. A proponent was selected from the RFPs submitted to negotiate with the town. However, we were unable to come to an agreement on the development for this area on the scope of the RFP. With the understanding that affordable housing is a priority of council, staff was directed to create a new RFP for Champlain Avenue that focuses on affordability, accessibility, and energy efficiencies. Provided with this motion report is a draft copy of the new request for proposal for Champlain Avenue. The scoring matrix has been modified to reflect the changes in the RFP and additional emphasis on financial contribution. If council approves the RFP, staff will look to release it for the month of October to receive new proposals from developers. And the action in motion is that council approves the new Champlain Avenue Request for Proposal for release to a pub, for release to the public in October of 2022 with a focus on affordability, accessibility, and energy efficiency. And I so move that, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Heenan, and I've got a seconder by Deputy Mayor Akaji. She was quicker than you right side. On this one, any discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody, so that has been carried, and we're on to the next set of motions for the third and final subject. Ninety-four.
Counsel, my next is PED 220710, Amendment MP 20-02-01 to the Town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, MP 20-02 for PIDs 01320035 and 15054893, 256 and 260 Water Street for Bridle Path International Incorporated, second reading. The background, the Town of St. Andrews has been working through the process of amendment to MP 20-02-01 to the Town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, MP 20-02 for PIDs 01320035 and 15054893 at 256 and 260 Water Streets from Bridle Path International Incorporated. The proponents are seeking an amendment to the allow for the development of a 12.2-meter, four-story, 36-mixed-use apartment complex. The following steps would need to be taken as part of the Community Planning Act process. Public presentation was held on July 18, 2022. First reading of the amendment, MP 20-02-01, was July 18, 2022. Obtained views of the Planning Advisory Committee, which was August 17, 2022. Call for public hearings of objections held on August 15, 2022. Second reading and third and final reading. At the 220906 Regular Council Meeting, after the presentation by Mr. John Rocka on the site design change and review of all information from PAC and public hearing of objections, Mr. Gopin presented council with the concept of the Development Scheme Bylaw Plan for this property. Council provided consensus on the height with the stipulation of the Development Scheme Bylaw, following the direction of council, provided his amended version of MP 20-02-01, noting the Development Scheme Bylaw as a requirement in conjunction with the Secondary Municipal Plan Amendment. As there is a timeline process to completing the amendment, six months, it has advised council move forward with the amendment process as staff and the developer worked towards the Development Scheme Bylaw. With the proposed change to the amendment, another public hearing of objections and calls for views of the Planning Advisory Committee are needed before the third and final reading. And the motion is that council grants leave for second reading to amendment, to amended amendment, MP 20-02-01 to the Town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, MP 20-02 for exemption under the HBD Section 2.1.2.6 (A), (B), (C) for Bridle Path International Incorporated, and it's in reference to PIDs 01320035 and 15054893 at 256 and 260 Water Street, and I so move this motion.
Thank you, a seconder for that motion, Counselor Neal. We're open for discussion. I guess I'll kick off by a question is, sometimes we have to go back to first reading if there's a significant change, does not adding in the Development Scheme Bylaw into this, does that not constitute as a significant change to what we would have done at first reading? Or is that, because when, the last meeting we had, I was under the impression we were going back to first reading, and I was just wondering if this is, if this works to go to second reading today?
I don't know about the Local Governance Act, but under the Community Planning Act, the only thing that you have to go back to is the public hearing and views of PAC, so you don't have to go back to the first reading. There might be something in the Local Governance Act, but?
Through you, your worship, generally speaking, your councils can modify and amend bylaws throughout the reading process up until the third and final reading, which council has done previously under the Local Governance Act. However, this is a Community Planning Act bylaw, so it falls under that act.
Perfect. I think coaching in the past has been, not to make significant changes between the second and the third reading would be what I've heard in the past, but just making sure that we're okay on that, counsel. Any comment on this one? So I guess it's safe to say that the next step after this would be for us to have a copy of the Development Scheme Bylaw before us, before we take after tonight, assuming it goes ahead any further? Is that correct?
Technically, this amendment is just to say there needs to be a Development Scheme Bylaw before the height requirement is relaxed of the secondary plan, and once the Development Scheme Bylaw is ready, that will also need a public presentation and a public hearing and views of PAC. So it's a long process, and I've been in communication with the developer about where the Development Scheme Bylaw is going and where he is and what he can submit, because he has to figure out his parking, that's, that's his big thing. But, so no, there's still another process for the Development Scheme Bylaw, this is just to amend the amending bylaw.
Perfect. And just to be clear for the public, just a follow-up question is, assuming all three motions go ahead, Monday, October 17, the public would have for that an opportunity to see the Development Scheme Bylaw? Would that be an internal document that only council sees?
Through you, your worship, the development, well, the Development Scheme Bylaw would not be prepared yet. The amended bylaw that you'd be reading tonight is what is being presented for views of PAC and the public hearing of objections, which will also be on our website for public news.
So the Development Scheme Bylaw itself will require all three readings, plus its own hearing of objections, so.
Correct.
Two, two opportunities.
And a public presentation.
So we're going back, so basically, we've done one, this will open the door for two more, basically, one for the Development Scheme Bylaw and one for this particular motion.
Yeah, if we'd started with this amending bylaw that had the Development Scheme in it, then we could have skipped this step, but we didn't, so here we are.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, I just wanted to have all the clarity out there because of the change for the public. So, counsel, any questions? I know I asked a pile, sorry about that. All right, I will call the question then. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, your worship.
And that is everybody, so I will read it. It's bylaw number MP 20-02-01, a bylaw to amend bylaw number MP 20-02, being the Secondary Municipal Plan bylaw for the Town of St. Andrews, be enacted by the council of the Town of St. Andrews as follows. Number one, bylaw number MP 20-02, the Secondary Municipal Plan bylaw for the Town of St. Andrews, is amended by adding the following after Schedule B, and that would be Schedule C. So number one, notwithstanding any policy or proposal in Schedule B, PID 01320035 and 15054893 are exempt from the height requirements of proposals 6A, 6B, 6C, so long as the Development Scheme Bylaw is enforced for those PIDs. This was read the first time the 18th day of July, 2022, and now has been read the second time the 20th day of September, 2022. Next motion?
Thank you, worship and counsel. Motion, that council requests the view of the Planning Advisory Committee for the Town of St. Andrews as per Section 110 of the Community Planning Act to amendment MP 20-02-01 to the Town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, MP 20-02, for exemption under HBD Section 2.1.2.6 (A), (B), (C) for Bridle Path International Incorporated, PIDs are 01320035 and PID 15054893 at 256 and 260 Water Street. I so move, your worship.
And once again, I'll be looking for a seconder, Counselor Neal. He keeps beating you by a bit tonight, Counselor Gomishel. Okay, any discussion on this one? Okay, I will call the question. All in favor of the second motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That's everybody, and now we're on to the final motion of the evening, I believe.
Thank you, your worship. Motion, the council sets the date of Monday, October 17, 2022, at 6:45 p.m., or immediately following the previous public hearing of objections at the W.C. Arena Council Chambers for public hearing of objections as per Section 111 of the Community Planning Act to amend amendment, MP 20-02-01, to the Town of St. Andrews Second, Secondary Municipal Plan, MP 20-02, for exemption under HBD Section 2.1.2.6 (A), (B), (C) for Bridle Path International Incorporated, PIDs 01320035 and 15054893 at 256 and 260 Water Street. I so move.
Thank you, a seconder for that motion. Deputy Mayor Akaji.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Got a discussion on this last motion? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor?
Aye, your worship.
That's everybody, and that has been passed. So at this particular time, that wraps up the motions for this evening. We now are, have nothing on our new business, because we already dealt with that issue. Or do you have something you'd like to add?
Well, I just want to go back, your worship, sorry, went through the RFP a little faster, not paying attention, unfortunately. So, there's only a question, we didn't have dates in it, so we're wondering how long you'd like that released?
Okay.
Back to the RFP, I slept through it so fast as you guys are going through it, but there were no dates put in, and we're just wondering what type of timeline you'd like between its release and when it closes?
So typically, they're 30 or 60 days, is that correct? But in this type, it's a development, there's a lot of planning, so I think the, the minimum should be 60 days. There's a lot to, to figure that one out. Does, does that, does that seem like a realistic timeframe? Will it get council consensus? But, Xander, you've seen these quite often, is 60 days kind of a?
Yeah, I, I think 60 days is, is good, and if, and I, you know, there might be some people who are already thinking about it and are getting stuff ready, so I, but I think giving, you know, it doesn't hurt to give more time.
Yeah. Any counselors see any difference, or deputy mayor, between 60 days? I think that's what it was the first time? Yeah, so?
I think it's only 30 or 35.
I'm seeing no argument, so 60 days it is. That way, it gives people appropriate time to really put planning and resources behind it, to put in a good RFP, hopefully for affordable housing in St. Andrews.
Thank you, worship.
You're welcome. All right, so that's it for new business then? So we are in question period at this particular time. I'll let you look online to see if there's anything, but while we ask the room, is there any questions for anyone in the room this evening? Come on up, sir. There's no microphone, per se, is there?
So, good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor Akaji and members of the council. I'm Douglas Greenaway, and I reside at 62 Princess Royal. You've probably gotten very used to me by now, in the same block as Bridle Path Proposed Project. And I rise to speak again on behalf of now 25 households who submitted two letters to the council regarding the project. So the first question is, to date, while the town clerk has acknowledged receipt of the letter we delivered on August 15, we've not received a response, and we're wondering when we might anticipate a response to that letter. I think both that letter and the letter of questions will be important for the future hearing of objections, which you've just scheduled, unless I've heard incorrectly for October 17. Is that correct?
Correct, October 17.
Right. So just wondering when we might anticipate a response to that?
I think that, again, I'll lean on staff, but I think that would probably be something that is uncovered as they actually develop the Development Scheme Bylaw, because a lot of that would be addressed within that agreement. Would that be safe to say? Mr. Spear?
Yes, your worship, that a lot of the questions weren't being able to answered, especially where council was still only at first reading. We'd advised the group that we're waiting to see what council's decision was, if they even going through with the amendment, because it was very specific details that were asked, so we'll pull it out and revisit it again tomorrow, just to see if there's anything in it that we can ask. I guess it does go back to the Development Scheme Bylaw, if this goes through three readings, that, the amendment, that that'll be a chance to really get into those details, and we can look at your questions again and see if that might be a more appropriate time to provide feedback, but, you know, we appreciate it now, but we have to kind of, a lot of the stuff is very specific to the developer, which at this point, we can't speak in their behalf, and he was just looking for some assurances through the amendment, because if the amendment wasn't going to go through, he probably wasn't going to continue on, so we had to wait to see council's feeling on that, and so they've gone to second reading, you know, we have a little more faith that it may make it to third, and so, and final reading. So we can start to look at that and see if there's some questions that we can answer, if there are some that are still going to have to wait till the next phase, which is still going to be very transparent and will require a lot more in-depth questions and detail that we may or may not have right now.
So we really appreciate the effort at transparency. The first set of, or the first letter sent on August 15 is not so much questions, but issues that we raised that we think warrants a response. So if you take a look at that first letter, we think you can consider some responses to that. In the second set of, the second letter that we sent on September 6 with the 22 questions, I think there are questions, if you look at those again, some that you can answer, they're broad, they're, they, they are reflective of concept, and then there are, of course, very specific questions. I do want, in the interest of transparency from ours, from the group, question number 16, you won't have it in front of you, but it addresses issues of stormwater runoff, and we thought there was just one drain, there are three drains, and I believe that one of our households sent a photograph maybe to Mr. Noper. If not, we'll resend it, but it shows flooding on Princess Royal Street even with the three stormwater drains. So please, if you take a look at the question 16, think of not one drain, but three drains in that location. We're glad to hear that you are moving forward with the Development Scheme Bylaw. We think that will add a level of transparency for not only you, but for the, the developer as well, and allow for public engagement with both you and the developer. And then finally, I wanted to sort of get a little sense from council, or we wanted to get a sense from council. There have been a range of variance requests to the town plan, and the 25 households are curious how the council views the plan in light of growing pressure for further development in the town. So is this simply guideposts for the council, or do you consider it a much more serious document in shaping where development goes in the town?
Yeah, so I don't know of any specific counselor like to answer their views, because I can't, I've specifically not asked them that entirely question, but just generally speaking, a municipal plan and a secondary municipal plan are guiding documents for your community. So to your point, you want to respect them as much as possible. With that being said, it is a balance between priorities in the community, because there's a lot of time where you can read a municipal plan and have reasons to say this is okay, and then there's reasons that will say that this isn't okay if you read a different section. But generally speaking, myself, I do find it, the process, a little challenging when you do a secondary municipal plan and you can just drop a property off that. I, I do see why the neighbors have concern in that, and that's my personal opinion. With that being said, I also know that it can be quite restrictive for development. St. Andrews has had a reputation as not being a development-friendly community for a very, very long time. Some of that's for a very good reason. We've been able to keep a lot of our heritage intact, and I think it's a balance to, to the point, is we want to protect what we have, but in the same sense, what we've been currently doing isn't working for our community. There's less and less people able to actually live in our community, afford to live, and we're seeing more people, and it's good to have new members, but almost every property for sale seems like it's being purchased from people outside the community now, because people locally almost can't afford it. So it's a balance, but to this specific property, there's higher-end pricing, so it doesn't really fit that model. So there's a lot to weigh in about it. I can tell you just to, to talk- a lot to weigh in about it. I can tell you just to, to talk about the plan, the other thing council's talking about is actually implementing a heritage bylaw for the downtown business district. So um, with that, i- i- it's one of those things that's really tough for council. I know they're struggling with it to preserve heritage, but also make these developments possible. So that's just my own view. Um, uh, there's concern. I've always said that I, I support development, but it's got to be done the right way. And I'm hoping through the development scheme process that we're able to answer a lot of the questions that the neighbors have that are, have signed that letter, because there's a lot of good questions in that, that email. It's just, the first step was determining, are you comfortable with the height? There's no point getting into the weeds of the details until we know we're on board for that first major, because if the height wasn't there, there's no point debating the rest, because it's not going to go ahead. So what I heard from council is the height is something that they're considering. So we need to start getting into some of those details that are in your question, as well as part of the development scheme bylaw. Anything that staff would like to add, or council, or anything on that?
Just um, as, as somebody who was involved in creating the bylaws, I, they, I think they are treated very seriously by council, and what's happening right now is the process to amend it. So it's not that council can just say, you know, we're not, we're going to ignore it. It's, it's, there's a clear public process, a long public process, um, as we've been going through for months now, and will continue to go through for another few months. So I think what the Community Planning Act does is say, if you're going to change these documents and deviate from them, um, there's a lot that you have to do and a lot to consider. And, and I think as we go through this, that's what council is doing. So um, it's not that they're seen as, as guidelines that can be ignored. It's that um, there's a level of seriousness. And for example, a variance under the zoning bylaw generally doesn't go before council. It goes before PAC, doesn't take longer than two months. Um, the public polling is only 100 meters. It's not, doesn't have to be announced on the website. So with these documents, municipal plans and secondary municipal plans, there's a lot more um that has to go into changing them. And um, but as the mayor's saying, things do change, and, and there are times when you do want to amend them, and the Community Planning Act lays out the process for that.
I think just to follow up on that more is it, it's a challenge with the secondary municipal plan, because if this development was on the block before where the, where the Kennedy Inn is, then they're off to the, they're, they could be off to building it, essentially. The, the only reason that they had to come before council was because of the height on that particular block. So, you know what I mean? It is a balanced game to the point is, is how do you not alter a neighborhood? But in the same sense, if you think of people that want to be mobile, they want to be close to downtown, it's a walkable community. So we, as you can see, I'm wrestling with it myself, and I think a lot of members of council are as well.
So I appreciate the um thoughtful response, and I certainly appreciate um my colleague, um, Mr. Gopin. Um, just FYI, I have a graduate degree in architecture and practice for a number of years, so we share a commonality. I think what's really would be useful for the council is to spend some time thinking through the dynamics of the secondary plan, and what does that mean for you all as leaders of this community in your need to be responsive to the community? The 25 households have very strong opinions about the height. Um, the, both the, the questions letter and the initial letter that we sent, um, probably doesn't bang that too hard, but there is a great deal of concern about changing the height because of the downtown historic character. So we thank your continued consideration and thoughtful and careful consideration. Um, everyone in this community loves this community and want to see the right kind of development on that lot, as well as other lots in this community. So we thank you for your time.
Perfect. And thank you for, thank you for your time. It was the last subject on the, the docket tonight, and question period's always the end, so appreciate your time as well. Yes, another question?
Sorry, I just have a question. Thank you for letting me educate myself on how you run your business, how you run our town, how we elect you to run our town. And so far, I've been so pleased with the openness of it. My name is Liz Erwin Kenyon. And just have a couple of questions while I've listened to debates and discussion tonight. One is, how many restaurants were polled when asked about the truck? Does anybody know how many restaurants were, five or six? Out of how many restaurants?
Your, your worship, they was polled within the residential block of the downtown, specifically where there are six res, or six restaurants, right, within the block. And there were no ma- major concerns. The biggest concern that was brought forward was as long as they're not, uh, their menu is not the same as what is being offered, that they were open to that, because it's a different offering, very, something very similar to what the farmer's market provides, because we have different Korean barbecues, Indian food, different varieties of restaurants that don't offer those, and that's where the restaurants were open to that. So we polled within the vicinity of where the event would take place.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. The other one was the young lady with the um, uh, the new development, Outer Millard Drive. And she was talking about, um, it wasn't on the, in the town plat, the historic plat, but either was Tim Hortons. And Tim Hortons was made to, you know, I mean, was readily asked to, to develop its, its look so that it fit in with the town. And then just one, uh, the third one, and I think I'll probably going to forget it, but maybe not, oh yeah, which is the parking of this new bridal development. Um, and that is, I've lived in apartments before in various cities where we had underground parking, but in the summer, in the spring, in the fall, I didn't want to have to try to park between those posts. That's why I often parked outside. And so that is another 34 potential, 64 people or 34 cars with their family and their friends that will be parking on the street. And this summer was atrocious in terms of the parking of Princess Royal and Water Street. It was a danger to try to pull out there at all. So um, to me, that's something that I'm hoping you'll really look at, that whole parking area there, because we've had major accidents there before and a death there, too. So it's something. And thank you so much for letting me speak. Probably red cheeks, but uh, you know, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying the whole meeting as well. Um, anyone else?
Hi, uh, my name's Peter Petricic. I'm new to the town. Moved here from Hamilton beginning of June. And the height restriction here, this concerns me, because I came from a community where it was developers threatening to go to uh municipal board to try and get restrictions lifted. And they go, no, we just want one more story. But it doesn't stop there. It goes from three to four to eight, and next thing you know, you're looking at high rises. And I'll tell you, I sure as hell didn't move here and look at high rises. Okay? So you got to be careful of the precedents you set, just as you have set a precedent here tonight with your food truck. You're quite correct, uh, sorry, deputy mayor, that what about the next one? Are you going to go poll restaurants every time someone wants a food truck now? You know, like, and you're thinking, okay, move it back to 11 o'clock. Well, you know, like, I, I see, I think it's a red herring. They close their kitchen about three hours before they close their business, because there's time to clean up, and there's noise, and all that goes along with it. You haven't really thought it through, in my opinion. Okay? You're setting precedents, because the next one come around and say, hey, you did it for them. It wasn't a big event. And how are you going to argue that? Okay? So, I don't know. Like, I love this town, believe me. We've put, you know, a lot of time, a lot of effort. We've hauled, you know, 1,500 kilometers to come and live here. And I hope that what we're getting is what we, you know, we're, we're, what we saw on the websites and the town and all that. Okay? And I was, I was once upon a time a school board trustee, and I know that my oath was to do what was best for the board, for that body. And it wasn't to do what's best for my children, or the people elected me, or the people gave me a donation. It's what's do what's best for the board. I ended up with three kids in three different schools, because I voted the right way. And I'm hearing a little too much leaning toward making sure developers aren't held back in putting a shovel in the ground, as opposed to the public who elected you. They should be the priority. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. I, I will say, just encountered that since, since it was, I guess, not really a question, but more of a comment. But just to be clear, we are hearing it both ways. It's, it's not just people saying, don't build. There's a lot of people in the community encouraging us to do this. And every single one of these people that got elected said housing was their number one priority. So this isn't completely a, a new thing, but I do take your points. Um, if you look at the secondary municipal plan, if Bridle Path Solutions was to go forward, that is your new standard for height in that block, and the next person could come and ask for a variance slightly higher than that. So points well taken, and, and thank you for attending tonight as well. Any other questions? Anything online?
I've received, uh, your worship, I've received nothing through email, and uh, it's just Ms. Bevington and family on for attendees. So.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
They've had the chance.
Mr. Nopper, I'll go to councillor and deputy mayor's comments. Um, deputy mayor Akaji.
Thank you, your worship. Um, just want to thank the Anglican Church and Archdeacon Matheson for the service, and the Legion members, and all their hard efforts for putting on the service on um Monday at 11 o'clock uh at the Senataph. A lot of work went into it, and to thank our town staff, because they set up, they tear down, um, they work overtime, and it, they were there in person. Thank you, Mr. Spear. Thank you, Mr. Nopper, and everybody else who was there to set up chairs, take chairs down, et cetera. The mayor was there to give his warm welcome. And um, and uh, so I really appreciate that that was done for the Queen, um, even though I'm not quite a loyalist, but, sorry about that. But um, it was a very nice presentation, a very nice service and well done. And I'd like to remind you of September the 30th, which is coming on fast. It's a Friday night, and um, we had, we, in conjunction with the uh chief of the um Beskotomakati people here in St. Andrews, have off, will be offering a, like we did last year, a gathering at, in, on Indian Point, um, at 6 o'clock, and everyone is invited. I'd like to see, and rather than just a sea of orange, maybe a global whole thing of, an earth of orange, where we wear the T-shirts to remember those um who attended residential schools, those that didn't come back, those that did come back with a, a lot of baggage. And uh, we just don't want to forget them and the truth and reconciliation that was done in, I believe, 94. So all of these things are going to be very pertinent. So we will gather at 6:00 PM on Indian Point, and we will um have a memory for uh those residential school survivors, those residential school people who didn't come back, children who didn't come back. So please wear your orange T-shirt on that day. I've been wearing mine beforehand, because I want people to know that it wasn't just the one day. Like, they chose the 30th of September, and it's wonderful to see. But we certainly don't want to forget, and I don't think we will forget, but I do ask that you attend, even in your community. I know that St. Stephen University is going to do something during the day. We decided at 6 o'clock, and uh, we will be there at the point. So I look forward to meeting with you and um, you know, remembering those, those children. October the 4th is Sisters in Spirit, and if you don't know what that is, Google it. But um, it again is another celebration, not a celebration, but a remembrance of missing and murdered um children. Not a nice thing to remember, but we don't want to forget those things that are happening. So um, although there will be no formal um celebration, the day is observed all throughout Canada and, and North America. So uh, remember Sisters in Spirit. So thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you.
And thank you for attending.
Thank you for drawing awareness, but also your leadership in helping uh those days be recognized in our community. Uh, any other member of council? I've got councillor Hurdle.
Uh, excuse me, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to um draw attention to the fact that we all know that we had a, a very busy summer as we continued to bounce back from the pandemic. Uh, the first faces that a lot of people in our community saw were the volunteers at the Welcome Center. So I just wanted to take a second and just recognize some of the volunteers that were there over the summer and help welcome people into our community, uh, guide them around the community as well, and direct them to, you know, the best experience they could have here in St. Andrews. Um, so just wanted to say thank you to Doug Nash, no stranger to all of us here, uh, to Barry Murray, uh, to Betty Ann Lord, to Anne McIntosh, to Michael Lefty Oral, and Dave Lord as well. And though technically not a volunteer, but our summer seasonal employee there for the chamber there was uh, Ally Wilcox, and as well, of course, Julia Havli, for all the wonderful work that she does uh, uh, for the chamber and for uh the Welcome Center there for the summer time. So thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you, councillor Hurdle. Any other councillor? Okay, I do have one uh announcement that I wanted to draw awareness to is um, the Union of Municipalities has their conference coming up. It's Thanksgiving weekend. Um, but they have awarded the Raymond Murphy Memorial Award. So the Union of Municipalities only gives away, I believe it's four major awards or three, just two? Just two major awards every year. And uh, this is about uh, basically like a lifetime award for your dedication and volunteerism to your community. And uh, pleased to see that Chris Fleming actually received that from the Union of Municipalities. So uh, Chris, a lot of you uh that know, was a longtime teacher here in, at Sir James Dunn Academy. Um, he has lots of experience at this very table, being a former mayor, as well as councillor. He uh is the chair of our planning advisory committee, uh, but no strangers to organizations like CHGO who's here. He is one of the fundamental people that helped get it up and keep it going for a number of years. And there's actually a series that CHGO is doing where Chris Fleming is, is aired and talks about the days as well with Brian Dixon of things that they accomplished. Uh, and uh, myself, I got to know him when I moved back to town, as he was volunteering for the Chamber of Commerce. He's volunteered at Kingsbury Garden. He has done so many things, and I know I'm leaving some off the, the list, but uh, you know, as uh, as he goes through the battle that he's doing right now, I think the whole town and the council is uh behind him and thinks that this is well deserved. And uh, I just want to highlight his contributions and that major award that he's received. Once again, it's the Raymond Murphy Memorial Award uh from the Union of Municipalities. And again, one of their, only two awards that they give to the entire province annually. So very, very good recognition for him and well deserved. Uh, at this time then, uh, it is 8:16 PM. I'm going to move that council goes into closed session for the Local Governance Act 68, 1J, which is a labor and employment matter, including the negotiation of collective agreements. I'll be looking for a mover to go into closed session. I've got councillor Goumichel and seconded by councillor Hurdle. Um, all in favor of going to closed session?
Aye.
We are now in closed session. We'll give a moment just to close everything down. Thank you.